Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend the comprehensive zoning map of Sussex County from a GR, general residential district, to a B2 neighborhood community district for certain parcels of land lying and being in Baltimore 100, Sussex County, containing 2.11 acres more or less. The properties are lying on the southwest side of Old Mill Road, which is Sussex County Route 349, and the southwest corner of Railway Road, which is Sussex County Route 350, at the intersection of Railway Road and Old Mill Road. The 911 addresses are 36294, 36306, and 36328, Old Mill Road, Ocean View. The tax parcel ID is District 134, Map 12, Parcel 73.00, 73.01, 73.02, and 73.03 submitted into the record, Mr. President. We have a copy of the applicant's conceptual site plan, we have a copy of the applicant's exhibits, we have a copy of the Deldot Service Level Evaluation Response, we have a copy of the staff analysis, and I would note that there are 26 written comments included in your paperless packet. The application was subject to a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission and its meeting of January 3rd of this year, and at the meeting of January 24th of this year, the Commission recommended approval of the application for the seven reasons as outlined with the new Commission's motion, and, Mr. President, a copy of that motion, along with the draft minutes of both of those meetings, is included in your paperless packet. Thank you.
Any questions, Council? Just more?
Thank you. Is the applicant or his representative here? Yes, sir. Come on forward.
Before I start my formal presentation...
Give us name and address, please, sir. Name and address.
My name is Lewis, L-O-U-I-S, Melton, M-E-L-T-O-N, 22476 Grebe Lane, in Ocean View, 19970.
Thank you.
Before I start my formal presentation, I want to make a few comments. Over the last couple of days, there's been a lot of opposition submitted to this application, and I want to provide some background that I think may be pertinent to the Commission, to the Council. First of all, we're not carpetbaggers. We've lived in the area for nearly nine years, support our community, and we have a vested interest in doing everything we can to protect our community property values. We believe the local real estate is a good investment. We own other local properties that, in each case, have done considerable work to enhance the value of the properties, including the property we are here to talk about today. We're not flippers. The zoning request was... This zoning request was prompted following a review of the layout of the proposed Sundance Club, whose main and only entrance spills out directly across the street from the middle of the property we are asking to have rezoned. This fact arguably chills the property value from a normal residential construction standpoint, and I suspect that any of the opposition would feel the same way if a residential community of 180 homes spilled out directly across the street from their property. Thank you for allowing me to make these statements. Today, we're here to request a change in the zoning from general residential to B2, and we believe that this zoning request is consistent with the county's 2045 Land Use Plan, and appears to match almost exactly the purpose of B2 Community District. To paraphrase, "The purpose of this district is to provide primarily for office, retail, shopping, and personal services uses, to serve the needs of a relatively small area, primarily nearby rural low-density or medium-density residential neighborhoods." Of note, on January 20th, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this petition with a vote of four to one in favor. From listening to the audio from this meeting, we believe that the single dissenter had this property on Old Mill Road confused with Old Mill Bridge Road, which is located near Route 54. And being familiar with traffic patterns on both of these roads, we concur that Old Mill Bridge Road would not be appropriate for this petition. If I could have the next slide, please. Okay, what I've got here, this is the location of the property, is the triangle at the bottom of the image there, and just right across the street is the Sundance Club, which is where I believe it's already been approved for 180 single-family dwellings. And I've listed right down there at the bottom of their property, the main ingress/egress, actually, it's the only other than an emergency ingress/egress that's proposed for the back right-hand side of that property. So this kind of confirms what I was mentioning earlier, that all of the traffic from that Sundance Club spills out directly in front of the property that we're requesting to have rezoned. Next slide, please. Sussex County continues to grow. There's, by my own calculations, 300 people per month can be expected here for the next seven to nine years. That is the equivalent population of another Ocean View every year for the next decade. The median age in the beach area was reported as near 63 in 2020, and that number is about 20 years older than the balance of the state. With this aging demographic comes a demand for more personal services, medical, beauty salons, tax, investment, accounting services, et cetera. Being off of Route 26, rental rates that we would be able to propose to businesses of that nature would be more affordable than they would be on Route 26. Providing personal services to a local population without having to contend with Route 26 traffic congestion is a win for everyone. Next slide, please. These are the... I guess, from a general standpoint, these are the opposition comments with my response to those. Twenty-five instances, or I guess 26 now, instances of official opposition have been registered. Much of the opposition is from a community that is nearly half a mile from the site and closer to 26. So just in the normal daily traffic patterns, there would be much more reason for the members in this community to turn left out of their development, to go to the shopping areas of Route 26, as opposed to going right, which would go in front of this property. There's also opposition from the community that is catty-cornered to this property, and also opposition from the Cripple Creek area. There's been no opposition at all from individuals directly adjoining this property. There is, in fact, plenty of development taking place along Route 26, some of which is available now. The rapid development along 26 leads to more congestion, which makes neighborhood business activity more desirable. Traffic at the location in question will be increased due to the development of the 300 homes mentioned previously, those on the Justice property, as well as the Sundance Club. With respect to the Sundance Club, an additional turn lane is anticipated, which will alleviate some traffic congestion. Any new traffic created by business activity will be de minimis due to the limited footprint of this property. And by that, I mean that there's not enough property here to put in any kind of a business that would draw large amounts of traffic, because it just... The property footprint simply wouldn't accommodate it. B2 permits businesses that may be inconsistent with area demographics, marijuana dispensaries, small engine repair, et cetera. It'd make no sense to open a business at this location that did not cater to the needs of the local demographics, which I described previously. This area has been known to flood. This is true, and the impact of the already planned housing developments is not really known at this point. Building considerations will need to be taken into consideration with respect to occasional flooding, and that would be our responsibility to do that.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. This is pretty much the layout of what this property or this parcel would look like once it was developed. There are two existing structures on the property now. One with a garage and warehouse that would be suitable for a local services business, such as floor coverings, small HVAC contractor, plumbing or electrical business. There's also a 1,200-square-foot rental unit attached to this structure. But I need to point out that, as I think the opposition will be reporting, that some current concerns over the potential of putting a business in there with a fleet, and there simply is not enough of a footprint in there to have a fleet more than one or two small vans. The largest component that we're looking at is a contemplated to be a coastal-style business office complex, and there's some residual property on this... Some residual lands here that would be constrained by setback considerations. Anyway, that completes my presentation, and I'd like to entertain any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Any questions of Council?
I do.
Oh, Hudson?
The two buildings now, what exactly are they being used for?
Right now, one of the buildings is my personal shop area. I keep an RV in there, and I keep... It's a work area and it's a shop, and that's about 1,800 square feet, and that's what I would consider to be suitable for some small carpet operator or HVAC. There's... And then attached to that, there's a 1,200-square-foot apartment, two-bedroom apartment, that's currently rented.
Is that the blue and red one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then the other piece, the other property we have there, is a home that we moved in there that was a nanny-coke home that we jacked up and built a three-car garage under, and that property is currently has a full-time renter on the second floor. But our expectations would be that that lower space, which is around 1,100 square feet, could possibly be used for some type of businesses, for example, a hair salon or possibly a food carryout type of establishment, but nothing of walk-in or sit-down type of arrangements.
Okay, now, right behind that is the old dump. Part of that property...
Part of the property...
Right behind the red one.
Right, I understand that.
Now, is that... Do you know whether that's considered a brownfield or not?
Well, I don't know. There's a... You know, there's a pond right beside that property, and that pond, as far as the county records is concerned, is part of the homeowner association for the Banks Acres, which are the... Whatever, I don't recall exactly the name, but the community that we back up to.
Yeah, I think that...
And then next door to it is the Justice property, and, you know, we all know what that is.
That's the old dump.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where we used to go to dump when I was a kid. I think, I'm pretty sure that pond, that dirt came out of there and was used for some fill in the dump. So as of right now, you don't know exactly what those buildings are going to be used for, because B2 is very specific?
That's correct. That's correct, and our objective would be that we believe that the best use of that property would be to provide additional professional office space for, say, tax people or financial advisors, potentially medical. It'd be great to get some, you know, medical providers in there, you know, with the idea of being able to cater to, you know, the demographics that live in that area and that are going to continue to come into that area.
Now, that road is extremely skinny, as you well know.
Yes, sir.
Has Deldot given you any kind of indication of what contributions they're going to demand?
Other than... The only thing I know is that Sundance Club is required to expand the width of the road for the length of their property, and to also raise the tarmac by two inches. And the only thing I know from Deldot is what has been reported in the report to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Anyone else?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here today that would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone here today who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Come forward, please.
Give us your name and address, please, sir.
My name's Martin Lampner. I live at 205 Chad Place, Ocean View, Delaware, 19970. I'm here on behalf of Whitesneck Communities Alliance. I'm still getting used to that, folks. You know me mostly as Evans Farm Watch, but we're in the midst of a transition. Like Mr. Melton, I would like to say a few words. First off, I've actually had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Melton. He's a thoroughly decent man, and I respect that, and I don't believe he is setting out to harm the community. That having been said, we disagree with some of his assessments, and, you know, we know he's a contributor to many good works in this community, so I don't want this to be seen as an adversarial project position, any more than by necessity it has to be. Thank you. Can I have our first slide, Jamie?
Did you submit this through the website, or did you submit it to the office?
I was physically delivered it Friday.
We're going to start the final concentration music in a minute.
While we're getting started, I can say a few things, and I will move on to a couple of other issues, and while I'd obviously like to have my slides, they're not critical to this conversation. We do have concerns, many of them were shared by Mr. Melton. One of the problems we face is that, in fact, yes, there are issues on Old Mill, and in fact, in 2008, McCormick and Taylor came back and said that those problems, that's it. Take your time. Always good to have your slides. Keep me on track and move it a little faster. Okay, well, as I mentioned, I'm here on behalf of the Whitesneck Communities Alliance. We are a group of 16 communities. Many have spoken on this. We assure some of the letters you've received come from a variety of places. We can move to the next slide, Jamie. And again, one of the things that was said in the P&amp;Z hearing, which I think we need to get on the record, was an implication that there are already many businesses in this area. That actually is not the case. This is taken from the county's zoning map. You'll notice the Justice property, that's the one highlighted in red, that is going to be housing. That removes one of the few commercial properties in this area. The pink is right now a daycare center and storage for agricultural purposes, and the little pink square down there actually is Bruce Muir's office. So those are the only businesses. It was stated by Mr. Muir's and others in the previous hearing that there are many businesses here. We'll move on one more slide, and this is actually the county map. You'll notice that there is nothing in the area other than medium-density and AR1. We feel we need to protect that, and again, there's some value in the things that Mr. Melton has said, but the problem is, he will not own that property forever, and that means if we create this zone, we open it up to others who may not be as respectful in their use of that property. And that's of concern to us. The area is, as has been said, developing rapidly, but we want to try and retain as much of the community mail you that we have, which is almost exclusively residential. As I say, we have no idea what will eventually happen with the pink square up, which is the junction of Whitesneck and Old Mill, so just up the road from this, and the red square, which is the Justice property, will be housing. I certainly understand his concern about what that does to access to his property. I'm sympathetic. We all confront that in some of the older communities. Many of our members live in Banks Acres, where they are faced by other developments that feed into their area. Banksville, which is the property behind, you know, is very, very close, and that is a concern. Something I wanted to read to you comes from a source that I wouldn't normally use, but I think it is of some relevance here. This comes from the Cato Institute, certainly not a bastion of liberal thought. What they're talking about is, under common law properly applied, again, as taking these things that those neighbors hold free and clear, property conceived and implied, the property rights are self-limiting. They constitute a judicially crafted enforceable scheme in which the rights of active users end where they encroach on the rights of others. And I think that's something we need to keep in mind. Often, we do hear in these hearings that there are, in fact, you know, rights of the person who owns the land and wants to develop it, and I'm certainly mindful of it. I'm a property owner. But the truth is, there are many other property owners in the area that are seriously concerned about this. We can move on to the next slide? Because this is a fly-in. It's not in keeping with the surrounding houses. We certainly recognize that, you know, this is not a bad thing, but it is very different from what our neighborhood is, and we've worked very hard, with your help, to defend that. So we have to defend the fact that this is residential and should remain residential, and in fact, the conversion of the Justice to residential goes to that, I believe. It's not a commercial area. There are only the three properties we saw on the previous map, and, you know, to bring that in now, particularly in light of the fact that Millville is working very hard to create a more comprehensive business district, is counterproductive. The types of retail that Mr. Melton described in the previous hearing, possibility of a convenience store, does cause concern. One, they are traditionally open long hours. They tend to also become gathering places, and if we can move on to the next button. The traffic issues on Old Mill are serious. As I say, McCormick and Taylor in 2008 basically said the issues that are there are irremediable, and they are so because, in many cases, the older homes, such as the ones that have joined my community and some of the communities a little further up the road and closer to this, the homes are set very close to the road. There is no way to fix the problem. One of the things that was advanced in that other hearing was the concept that people, potentially from Sundance, potentially from Justice, and potentially from my community, might well, you know, ride their bike or walk here, which would be a positive impact, and it would if it were possible. Something I would like to pass to the...
Yes, thank you.
...particularly dangerous road for those who walk or ride. I'm a cyclist, and I do it, you know, but I cringe every time I leave my neighborhood. I have no real choice, because I have ridden in my bike for years, and I use it as my primary means of transport in town. I've ridden in New York City, I've ridden in Baltimore, I've ridden in Washington, and a variety of other large urban areas. And I've got to tell you, I find this road far more frightening than I do any of those places. I find 26, which is crowded and busy, less frightening, because at least it has shoulders. There are no shoulders on most of this road, and yes, as Mr. Melton pointed out, Sundance will need to make improvements, but this one tiny little patch in an otherwise terribly congested area. And what you've got there are two cases where cars were forced off the road because there was a cyclist in the opposing direction. A car was coming, and they were in their lane. So far, we've been blessed that there have not been head-on collisions, but it's inevitable there will be. There was a hit-and-run only a few, you know, less than a quarter of a mile from the site, so I beg you to consider that any business, you know, in that area will potentially generate traffic, and whether the current tenants or the tenants Mr. Melton conceives, you know, right now not being a significant burden, that doesn't stand for the future necessarily. Next, please. As I say, it undercuts what's going on in Millville. As you may be aware, Millville's town plan now calls to build a formal retail area and to upgrade the existing 26. We shouldn't be taking business out of that area, and yes, 26 is congested, but Old Mill is too, and in some ways, it's far less able to cope. There are not turning lanes the length of the road, there are no shoulders, and every additional car is an additional threat to all of us. Next, please. We urge you to reject this proposal, not because in some ways it couldn't be of value, it could, but we do believe that, as was set out in the case Green v Sussex County Council and Sussex County Council v Green, which I'm sure Mr. Moore can tell you about, I'm not an attorney, I'm not going to pretend to be one, but what it said very clearly is owners who have bought their properties on the assumption of what the zoning around them is, you know, is today, have a reason to be able to, you know, expect it to remain that way unless there is clear pressing reason to change it. Next. I recognize, and I'm sure, you know, you folks will give it due deliberation, I hold you in respect, you know, we've worked with you before, we know you're not the enemy, and we know Mr. Melton isn't the enemy either, but if it's to go forward, we believe there have to be limitations on the property. Next slide, please. We don't believe this location is suitable for retail, professional offices. We're not happy about it, but it would be easier to consider. Next, please. A convenience store will generate at least 700 to 1,200 trips if it's going to be viable. Now, I am by training a CPA, I also have a master's in business, I ran a large not-for-profit, and one of our businesses was things like convenience stores to employ the disabled people we served, and I can tell you, if you don't generate that type of traffic... Next, please. You can't break even. So we don't see it as a real imposition to ban that type of business from that location. The average sale in a convenience store is about $11.40. Out of that, about .57 goes to covering the other costs. The $11.40 minus the .57 is what's the cost of goods sold, but if any of you've been through a business course, you know, fixed costs are variable. They go down the more business you do. Variable costs, such as the products you're selling, are fixed. The price is the price. Next slide, next button, please. You can do the math, and I trust you folks to do that, but it will cost about $700 a day to operate the store. I can say that with some certainty, and I will give you the biggest single item. No convenience store functions with less than three people. You might get away with two and a half. If you had two and a half people at today's $15 wage, and the store operates 10 to 12 hours, you're looking at about $450 in wages before you get started. After that, you've got to pay your rent, you've got to pay your insurance, you've got to make your repairs, and therefore, we do urge you, you know, to factor in the fact that this is not a likely candidate anyway, and we would ask you to restrict the use of rental at the site. Next. So as I say, you'd almost need 1,200 customers a day to break even. Now, many of them might be from across the street, they might not generate traffic going down the road. One of the big problems with Old Mill is the intersection with Atlantic. There are backups there in the summer there that can span over a mile back. This, you know, may or may not impact that, but there will obviously be some people who would otherwise not stop or not go, or might come from the other streets that intersect Old Mill to use that store, so we urge you to not permit that. Next slide, please. Oops. By the way, that's the source of the information. I didn't make this up. It comes from the National Association of the Convenience Stores. Next slide. So we would ask you to do many things. You actually have a list of stipulations. We would ask you to seriously consider... We would ask you to seriously consider if you're going to move forward with this. Amongst them, limit the hours on the site. No evening hours.
We go too far down this road. You're asking for conditions, essentially, but this is a change of zone. So in a conditional use application...
Yes, I understand.
...that would be appropriate, but this is a change of zone. So am I right?
That's correct. We have no authority or power to impose conditions on a change of zone.
I will leave it here then with you, gentlemen, and lady. I apologize. But I do think, you know, in light of that, the fact that it cannot be restricted goes to our earlier point, that the fact that Mr. Melton's an honorable guy. I believe he will look out for the good of the community. But Mr. Melton may not be the only owner. And since the change of zone cannot provide us any protection, there's no guarantee what comes next. And with that, any questions?
Questions, the council?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Anyone else? An operator, can you... Oh, there was a hand up in the back. I'm sorry. Do you want to come forward?
Gentlemen, the blue sweater stood up.
Yes. Were you planning to speak? No, no, no. Come on up. You were hidden by the pole. I couldn't see you.
My trace is getting that together. My name's Dave Bartlett. I live at 36718 Baltimore Avenue in Ocean View, Delaware, in Banks Acres, which is the development that is diagonal to the subject property. One. Trace, just real quick. Can I use the keyboard up down? Let me just a second here while I try to navigate this here. Okay. Thank you for allowing me to comment on the rezoning application, CZ 1998. As I stated previously, and as documented in testimony I provided to planning and zoning commissioners on January 3, 2024. I was the only person in that meeting at that time. There was not another person, and I'll explain probably why that happened here shortly. The property owners of Banks Acres, the development adjacent to the rezoning request, and those that I have spoken with in Banksville Park, which is immediately south of that... There we go. In Banksville, which is immediately south of the subject property. Some of the homes less than 50 feet away. And myself continue to be opposed to CZ 1998 for the following reasons. New and additional information has been posted by the applicant on Planning and Zoning Portal that require attention for this rezoning. Just a maintenance item for a moment. For the record, I do not know any members of the Melton family. I've never met them. My comments are spirited. Perhaps some may feel they appear confrontational in nature. Should that be the case, so be it. We're all adults here. Perhaps a quote from the original 1972 Godfather movie is in order here right now, and I think it sums it up best. It's not personal, strictly business. The only personal interest that I have is that for myself, my family, and that of my neighbors. By their very own submissions, the Melton family is trying to change the character of our respective neighborhoods with a zoning change request, and in so doing, profiting financially for their own self-interest, even if it be at the cost of their neighbors. Some that are less than 50 feet away. That being said, there are several items that I feel need to be surfaced in view of recent postings from the applicants. Just give me a moment here. Since the January 3 Planning and Zoning Meeting, the applicant's exhibit supporting docs dated February 7, as well as a letter to Mr. Whitehouse dated December 6, 2023. The owner applicant states on page 3, "Consistent with spirit legal provisions of B-2 classification. Nighttime activities are permitted on B-2 zone properties, i.e. bars, convenience stores, skilled trade service buildings for HVAC plumbing," as Mr. Melton pointed out. While this proposal may be in the spirit of B-2 zoning, if approved, these buildings will be completely out of character with the zoning of this area, which is primarily AR and GR. Just a moment to get back. If rezoned and approved as a B-2 property, there is nothing to prevent the buildings from becoming any type of business approved under B-2 regulations. Ironically, the owner notes, and I quote, "Location not suitable for drive-by after-hours businesses, convenience stores, bars, clubs, restaurants, et cetera." Yet, if approved to B-2, owners, their heirs, or future owners can do as they please if approved as B-2. An approval by county council will be so in perpetuity of the property. This alone cannot be understated. Since the January 3 Planning and Zoning Meeting that I attended, the applicants have submitted exhibit supporting docs as of February 7, 2024. The owner states, "Soon-to-be-developed or rental space is expensive due to location." The assumption there is, is that he is speaking of the properties that are currently existing on Route 26. This is irrelevant and speculative at best. Any businessperson knows that rental space is part of the cost of doing business. Additionally, the applicant does not state that their proposed buildings will cost any less to lease than those out on the Route 26 corridor and are still waiting for occupants. The owner states in number two, "Any traffic increase generated by this B-2 zoning rezoning request would be marginal. Once again, completely speculative at best. In 2008, Del Dot's own engineering firm determined that the existing roads in the immediate area could not be maintained in an acceptable service condition. Actual traffic counts are based on a study from over 10 years ago. Furthermore, it is felt that the counts were not made by Del Dot during the summer when traffic on Old Mill Road is backed up nearly a half a dozen traffic light cycles at Route 26 and Old Mill Road." I'm sure Councilman Hudson has experienced that himself firsthand in trying to get the hell off of the peninsula. It just doesn't happen in the summertime. And that's just the way it is. We live with it. For the benefit of council members that are not familiar with this area, Old Mill Road is a two-lane country road with no shoulders, no bike paths, no sidewalks, and is used extensively by full-time and seasonal residents as it parallels Route 26, which has nightmarish traffic in the summer months. Applicant states, owner states, and business developed, "Any business developed will necessarily need to cater to demographics of surrounding community. I am nearly at a loss for words that do not contain superlative adjectives for this statement other than give me a blank break. If this rezoning request is approved, there is nothing..." Let me repeat, "nothing" to stop the applicant, his or her heirs, or whomever they choose to sell the developed properties to, from placing businesses such as a marijuana dispensary, a vape shop, a bar, small engine shop repair, or even a gas station if approved according to the rules of B-2. There are homes that are within 50 feet or less of this property that will be burdened with whatever is eventually placed here. Furthermore, I feel everyone in this room is well aware that if approved and rezoned to B-2, that a rezoning to B-2 will be so in perpetuity for the property. If approved, there will be a conflict between the Melton property entrance that was submitted and recently approved Sundance Club development, Old Evans Farm property, the county council recently gave the approval for. It should be noted that the applicants have mentioned this in their very own letter to Mr. Whitehouse, dated and revised on December 6, 2023. In paragraph 3, the owner states, "Sundance Club will be directly across the street from the applicant's lots." There's a picture of the brown area up above. This is going to be the new Sundance community here. This is the subject property here with the oblique triangle that Mr. Melton would like to develop. The applicants of this request... My slides are out of order. Nope. Yep. The applicants of this request have also mentioned in her letter to Mr. Whitehouse that the 10-acre parcel, tax ID 134127201, also known as the Justice Property, that is west of the subject property, is Zone C-1, alluding to the fact that there is already commercially zoned property in this area. And he's correct. However, the 10-acre property mentioned that has been zoned for decades. It was changed to C-1 and was approved by county council on August 25, 1987. Since that time, the site has been used to store heavy construction equipment and as a landfill. I have validated with planning and zoning the date of the property change to C-1. Point being, this change to C-1 is not at all recent, as you may have been led to believe. And is one of a very, very small fraction of properties in this area that is zoned something other than AR and GR. There are more than enough daytime and evening businesses on Route 26, roughly a half a mile away from the subject property. This is a Google Earth shot here, showing 2,792 feet. Several brand-new buildings have just been recently erected and completed on Route 26 to allow for offices, shops, and other non-industrial operations, keeping noisy operations away from residential communities. Several of these brand-new buildings are not even occupied yet as they continue to seek new tenants. There is vacant land, tax ID 13412350 on Route 26, that is already approved and cleared with underground utilities in place for even more commercial operations. For council members not familiar with this area of Sussex County, it should be noted here that this area of Route 26 is a commercial area with various businesses and services. This is the area that should be built upon to meet the needs that the applicant states he will provide versus in a residential area. With the exception of the technical parcel mentioned in two above, tax ID 134127201, the area in and around the request is nearly 100% residential and farms. At the Planning and Zoning Meeting on January 26, the applicant states that there are other commercially operated properties in the area, mentioning each by name. Businesses named can be found starting at recording time 4:24:22. In searching the Sussex County website, I learned that Mr. Melton is partially correct. However, the lion's share of the properties he's mentioned are zone residential, either AR or GR. They are not, in fact, commercially zoned properties. Now that Mr. Melton has surfaced this irregularity in zoning use regarding his neighbors, it is obviously up to the county council to decide how or even if to address these single small-owner businesses. Again, rezoning of the Melton property to B-2 would be completely out of character with this area. In a letter dated December 6, 2023, revision 2, to Mr. Whitehouse, applicants made comments regarding a chronic workforce housing shortage. The applicant states in paragraph 6 of that letter that he may include apartments above the businesses. While adding apartments above businesses may be considered honorable by some, it is impossible to predict the outcome of such a proposal with businesses below using Melton's concept. Council members who may not be familiar with their area should be made aware that any perceived workforce housing shortage in this area is typically associated with J-1 students that are working in the area restaurants. This occurs just before Memorial Day and then shortly before Labor Day. As council members are aware, an apartment complex known as Tupelo Sands up on the screen now is 216-unit apartments, tax ID 134159301, is already under construction next to BB Emergency Cancer Center on Roxanna Road, approximately a half, approximately a mile from businesses on Route 26. Once again, any person requiring apartment-type housing would still need to drive a vehicle or bike as there is no public transportation in this area out to the Route 26 corridor. This is a Google Earth slide, and just for the record, you'll see BB Healthcare South Coastal there. I just used that as a placeholder. Google Earth has not updated their slides yet to show the new Tupelo Sands. Additionally, there are plans that will be submitted to Planning and Zoning as soon as this year, as well as county council for the 10-acre property mentioned above, tax ID 134127201, that's approximately 600 feet west of the applicant's property line, aka the Justice Property, requesting approval for a total of four apartment buildings in 56 townhomes, creating 128 new units in total. These units will help to provide and address any affordable housing shortage we will perceive in this area. These apartments, along with Tupelo Sands, will provide significant apartment-type housing in this general area. At the January 6, 2024 Planning and Zoning Meeting, attorney Vince Robertson stated that the Justice Property application will most likely need to be granted due to the fact that the land is already approved as C-1, as well as county council approving it as well. The point being, there will be apartments, and they will be located less than 600 feet away from the subject property. Most importantly, and again, the area will still remain residential in nature. It should also be noted here that the Justice Property backs into set-aside land owned by the Bay Forest Community, and that's this piece right here to the south. And it's impractical and nearly impossible to build on due to old gravel pits and a dump, as well as an abandoned county dump that is to the west of that, which is the state of Delaware, tax ID 134826. This is to show that it's 521 feet from where I thought the building would be, give or take 100 feet. This is where the confusion really gets irritating. As shown in the following slides, there is and has been some serious confusion regarding the required signage that is and was posted on the corner of Railway and Old Mill Road. Last year in 2023, when signs were first posted, they were placed directly across from each other. This gave the perception that the required public rezoning postings, the yellow signage, are for the same property, i.e. the Sundance Club, when in fact, the signs are and were not for the same request. Councilman Hudson may recall that there was signage that was placed on three corners there at one time when the Evans Farm Watch Group was protesting the apartments that were going to go where Sundance Club is now. So the fact that this could be confused is really easy to understand by no fault of the owner. Placement confusion of signs was acknowledged at the Planning and Zoning Meeting on January 3. The confusion was validated by nearly a dozen different residents and property owners that I know who reside in Banks Acres and Banksville Park. Council members should also note that the required public signage for CZ 1998 is and has been missing for several months. This picture was taken January 24. You'll see no sign here. And it was even before that that the sign was missing. And it's still missing as I speak before you today. Ironically, and at the same time, you'll see signage remains for the Sundance Club, even though it's been approved. And that's on the right-hand side of the screen at the 3 o'clock position, which was already approved by county council. This pic was taken February 16. Still no sign. Pic taken, as I said. Also noticed the vehicle, which I believe to be the applicant's vehicle at the Little Red Pole Building. In the letter the applicant submitted to Mr. Whitehouse... I'm off on something here. Excuse me one moment. I got a slide out of order. In the letter the applicant submitted to Mr. Whitehouse that was revised and submitted on December 6, the applicant states in paragraph 3 the following: "That the Sundance Club development now approved will greatly diminish their lots from sitting into any GR zoning. Personally, I'm failing to see how this is county council's issue, especially now that the Old Evans Farm property, soon-to-be Sundance Club, will keep this area residential in nature and the fact that Sundance Club will allow this area to remain within the character of AR and GR. I would like to think that anyone buying parcels of property across about 40-acre field would have to at least have an inkling that something would be built in that area, especially given the expansion, or should I say explosion of properties being developed in the Ocean View area and the Millville area." As of this morning, when I looked at 8:00 a.m., there were 20 comments in... As of this morning, when I looked at 8:00 AM, there were 20 comments in opposition to this project. I think I just heard a little while ago, maybe 28. Director Whitehouse may remember this conversation from that evening, but the planning and zoning servers had an issue. I want to state this twice. The majority, majority of full-time residents of Banks Acres and Banksville, so I'm talking about those people that live there full-time like I do, are primarily senior citizens. Most do not have the technical ability or computer savvy to submit a comment electronically via the internet in opposition to this request. For that matter, many do not drive due to age, so they cannot appear here in person today to oppose this request. I fully realize that this 21st century issue is not a county council issue. Further to the above, I know two property owners who are in fact computer competent that did have issues commenting on the planning and zoning website for this particular application a day prior to the January 3 meeting. The planning and zoning employee was allergic to this problem prior to the meeting on January 3. At the planning and zoning meeting, I brought up this fact to the commissioners. Director Whitehouse, as well as county attorney Vince Robertson, both acknowledged that there were several problems that day. See recorded timestamp on that recording at 4:40 56 to 4:42 27. I would encourage council members to review the recording of the meeting that day. Tax-paying citizens like myself should not be treated like children when surfacing a technical issue as I was. That said, one can only imagine how many other property owners experienced a similar problem on the days leading up to the planning and zoning meeting, and hence the reason why there are not even more comments in opposition to this request. As council will note, as of 8:00 AM this morning, there are zero comments in support of this application in the planning and zoning portal, and in conversations with property owners, there continues to be zero support for this request in the surrounding communities, as you will hear or have already heard today. Every single property owner I have spoken with, full-time and/or seasonal, has told me they are approved to such, they are opposed to such a request for the reasons that I have stated. What I have up here on the board here, and apparently I've lost it in my notes, this is Mrs. McGraw's residence, and she is roughly 178 feet, by the way the crow flies, from the property. Mrs. McGraw states that she never received a, whatever the card is in the mail, to say that there was a rezoning request. She was supposed to give me a letter today, but I've heard that since that did not happen for personal reasons. A lengthy wrap-up here. Recently, Commissioner Mears made a motion to deny CU 2436. In his opinion to commissioners, Mr. Mears stated, and I quote from the February 19 Coastal Point article, "The commission wants to support small businesses, but there was no way that planning and zoning could write conditions to bring CU 2436 into compliance with county code." Mears said noise and truck traffic next to a residential community is not in an appropriate location. This is adversely affecting neighboring properties. I would like to point out that there's no difference between our residential communities and the Peninsula Lakes community that would have been impacted by CU 2436, other than perhaps the price of the homes. I certainly hope that council will give this serious consideration when rendering an opinion that low to moderately priced properties are impacted in the same manner as higher-priced properties like Peninsula Lakes, and that we are treated accordingly. Again, referring to the audio/video that is still online, you will hear the applicant say in his own words, they do not know what they are going to do with the middle property. You can see that at recorded timestamp, 4 hours, 21 minutes, and 50 seconds. This statement alone sends chills up the spines of the applicant's neighbors and should give pause to county council, because if this rezoning request is approved to B2, the owner, current or future, can place anything they please that meets B2 regulations, up to and including bars, lounges, et cetera, whether the owners currently contemplate then or not. As the council can only imagine, those of us that live in Banks Acres and Banksville Park, which are low to moderately priced homes, will not be insulated from the Melton redeveloped property if it is developed into commercial property. The applicant uses the word contemplate freely throughout letter writing. In the letter to Mr. Whitehouse, the applicant states in paragraph 5, "There are no nighttime activities contemplated for this request. However, there is nothing to stop them if rezoned to B2." If this rezon request is approved and rezoned to B2, there is nothing to stop bars, convenience stores, restaurants, et cetera, from being placed in an area that is strictly and currently all residential in nature. Mr. Melton recognizes this in his letter to Mr. Whitehouse and does so in bold print. All the current property owning, tax-paying residents bought and built our homes in the communities that surround this request with the understanding that it would remain residential or agriculture in nature for as long as we owned our property. For that matter, many seasonal residents are not even aware of this request. The property owners in and around this area contemplate that if this is approved, it will create a traffic nightmare, place businesses in an area that is all residential, and would have the possibility of unwanted businesses in the future, possibly decreasing property values for existing property owners, because if it is rezoned, all of us in this room know, if approved, it will be so in perpetuity. That being said, I would ask the council seriously contemplate the rezoning request as it very well may be set a precedent for future applications that very well could be in each of your own backyards. At the very end of the planning and zoning meeting, please keep in mind that there were only four of us in the audience at that time. Mrs. Melton can be seen asking me a question at timestamp 4 hours, 46 minutes, and 46 seconds. I believe she asked how long I have owned my property that I built on in Banks Acres. I should have asked her what relevance her question had to the application. My speculation is that, like many seniors, she may have felt that I am intimidated by the change the Meltons are requesting, and Mr. Melton mentions in his testimony at the planning and zoning meeting timestamp 4 hours, 27 minutes, and 3 seconds for this property. For the record, for the council, I'm not intimidated. However, much like everyone else in this room, I cannot predict the future of what may become of the Melton property years from now if this rezon request were to be approved. My hope is to leave the home that I built with my hands to my children and that the properties in the area appreciate in value. Of course, there are no guarantees, but I know that if I did not speak my piece to county council today, I may live to regret it. All of us are going to have some regret we're going to take to the grave. Not me, not today. For every reason I have listed above, including the residents, I respectfully request the Sussex County Council deny this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Anyone else in the room? There's someone just raised their hand all the way back. And you've heard two presenters with different items. If you could, please try to address things that are different than have already been presented.
Okay. I did submit some letters. Am I ever allowed to read?
Give us your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Teresa Gallen, Oscar Pato. I live at 36767 Clubhouse Road in Oceanview, Delaware. Here today to oppose the zoning mostly because, like everyone else has mentioned, it sets a precedent for what may be to come in the future in an already convoluted, really tight area. I also wanted to mention that, and the traffic is another thing. Lots of homes come in. I can't do anything about that. I get that. But the infrastructure with the Intranet is another thing that I know I've brought up here before, probably don't remember, but that's a, it's a constant battle. I work from home, and I get kicked off the Internet continuously, working in several spreadsheets. It's not your problem, but it's only going to get worse. Do you know what I mean? And I also... Am I allowed to read a letter from another development? They did...
Is it for this hearing?
Yes, they did post it, so I wasn't sure because it was already written. So, but, but before I read the letter, I would like to also tell a personal story about an incident that happened in August of 2021. It has to do with the traffic in, because I live right off of Clubhouse, so I have to take a left to get up to 26. My stepson was visiting, and he had his 12-bike old beautiful French Bulldog puppy. We were out in the yard, and the puppy, we believe, got stunned by a bee. The veterinarian, the local veterinarian, had just closed, and we had to go all the way to Berlin, no, Salisbury, Maryland, because of, you know, the vet not being open. The traffic just getting out of my house was so bad. By the time we got to the vet, the puppy died in my arms. And I'm not blaming you all, but it's, it's, the traffic is just really bad, and it's getting worse every year. And that is a true story. His name was Archie. So I'm going to read you a letter from the... Sorry, let me just... My computer broke. I'm just not having a great day today. This, this letter is from the mill-run Acres Homeowners Association. They would like to tell you that they oppose the proposed... They couldn't be here, sorry, for doctor's appointments. They oppose the proposed zoning change. The areas currently zoned residential and agricultural. The proposed development would put a burden on the, on the current infrastructure of the area, specifically narrow roads, insufficient drainage, traffic congestion, traffic control devices, and insufficient lighting. The construction of a strip mall would change the aesthetics of the community. It would also create a dangerous environment. Example, the increase of hundreds of vehicles and pedestrians entering and existing a strip mall on a poorly lit, narrow road with sidewalks or crosswalk designation without, rather, and without traffic controls, which would cause a danger to pedestrians and vehicles. Is not our desire to see another Route 26 with its traffic congestion and problems on the residential agricultural community. There's plenty of opportunity on Route 26 for this type of development, but not in a residential area. That is from Denise Solecki, who lives in, on, I forgot her address, I'm sorry. But you can also find it on your website, and I thank you for letting me tell my story. I just really hope that you really consider the zoning and maybe helping us out with some traffic issues at some point in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak in opposition? Anyone else in the room? Seeing none. Operator, can you...